Head and call tonight's meeting to order. Let's have the roll call.
Kessler.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Rarden.
Here.
Ewer. Benner.
Here.
Parton.
Here.
Crown. Thompson.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will begin by David Benner of the West Table Baptist Church.
Let's pray together. Father God, this is a season of the year when you fill our world with beauty and wonder. And Father, it reminds us of the beauty and wonder of your amazing love that gives us a reason to celebrate. And Father God, that's exactly what we're going to do as a community because once again, we're going to be able to have a fall festival. And Father God, we confess that we're really looking forward to the fall festival this year because we've all been through a difficult year. And we really need a time to celebrate. And so, Father, I just pray that it would be a special time of celebration for our community. And Father, we pray that it will bring us together, will enable us to enjoy the relationships that we have with one another. And Father God, we now pray for our mayor and the members of the city council. We know that the leadership that they provide for our community is absolutely essential to our well-being. And Father, so we pray for our leaders. We pray that you will fill their hearts with your love and fill their minds with your wisdom. And Father, enable them to make decisions that will bring us together as a community, will enable us to become all that you desire us to be. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. Well, we'll pleasure allegiance without the flag, so that's what we're not gonna do that. We're just pretend where it usually is. All right, pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our flag disappeared.
All the presentation kind of got it.
Presentation approval minutes, eight minutes of September 27th, 2021. Ms. Benner?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 27th business meeting.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes of September 27th, 2021. Another discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Upstayed.
Item one, citizens be heard. Tonight, we have with us Craig Daniels, the Ainsley's Angels of Rolling on the Prairie 5K. So Craig, please come forward to the podium and let council, let us know what you're planning on doing.
So even the best for first. So on April 2nd of 2022, Ainsley's Angels, in which I was putting on a race at, it'll start at Dorner Park. And just a little bit about what Ainsley's Angels is, it's a national nonprofit that pairs able-bodied runners with individuals with disabilities. We provide a racing wheelchair and then we race. They're, we have ambassadorships in 22 states and I couldn't tell you how many angel teams, probably in the thousands. So I filled out the special permit. And this being a novel task for me, we started this, we started here about two years ago in Hayesville, but I guess in Virginia Beach. They didn't see Hayesville on the map, so they made a switch off. But so I've never done a nonprofit and along with that, I've never put on a race. This is part of the national race series from the national ambassadorship. I've applied and was approved to put it on. They run in about 15 cities and we're the only one in Kansas. We're only actually one of two ambassadorships in Kansas. So on the special event permit, I had the time listed there because we're looking at adding a food truck rally and a car show as well. I just wanted to ask council, and I don't go to a lot of council meetings, so this may be completely out of order. You can shut me down. But if we could somehow limit the traffic going in ahead of time so we could get the food trucks and hopefully the car show as well set up for the race that'll go on. I believe on the permit I put four and we figure we'd be done by nightfall.
You're actually, you're in April, isn't your time minutes?
Yes, yeah, April 2nd.
We got time then to work on the things that you had previously brought up. So you might want to work with Will and with the police chief on both those things so they know what you're wanting to do. So we can then bring that back in and get approval for those as to where you're going to set the car show and where you're going to do those things. Might work with them. Then we can come back. We have time so that we can get approval for that at this point.
Perfect.
I don't know if people truly totally understand for sure. My understanding is that what you have are people that will be taking care of disabled people in wheelchairs.
Well, so it's anybody with an ADA defined disability that would not otherwise be able to participate in an endurance event. And so we pair them with able-bodied runners and then we do endurance events like 5Ks, 10Ks, half marathons. We've done the gobble gobble here in Hayesville. I believe we're coming into our third or fourth year. Pretty much every race that Rob puts on through the hack, he's graciously allowed us to participate. So that's, and we have the course pretty well mapped out and I did put that on the application, but that's pretty much what we do. So my youngest son is a disability. He's not able to race. He's in a wheelchair. And it's the one thing he loves is feeling the wind in his face. And we found really across the nation, a whole lot of individuals find that that ability to be included within their community to be very fulfilling.
I know we've approved that for you already. So, and I think the council has seen that we think it's a great thing that you're going to have it here in the city as you have before. So that we have the disabled people that are able to run and you have somebody paired with them. So I think it's truly going to be a great thing to bring people in for the city, especially down in our Dorner Park area over there.
We're expecting folks from five different states to be here. There's ambassadorships in Oklahoma, Missouri, Colorado. And then we'll also have the head of the organization, the CEO who started it with his daughter Ainsley. But he'll, he's going to be coming in for the races as well. So we do expect to have a lot of.
I appreciate you wanting to bring it here to town to have a down in Dorner Park. But I would say work with those so we can truly get everything done that you want to get done at this point.
Great. Do you have your emails? Do you have a card or anything? I mean, I could speed and get pulled over and get it. Oh, I can't, I can't show it. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Item two, couple licenses logged. We have nothing on our, on our agenda. Item three is introduction of ordinances and resolutions. In ordinance vacating a portion of platted utility easement within Lot 1, Block 2, Hill Crest Edition. We have Jonathan with us from planning that will present and answer any questions you have for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. On September 23rd, the Hayesville Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider a vacation of portion of platted easement over in the Lot 1, Block B, Hill Crest Edition at 925 West Alexander Drive. It was basically that a portion of their, of the easement, the corner of the house was in there. The owners did a separate survey. There's no sewer. There's nothing under there encroaching in the area. They just wanted to do a vacation of the portion so that way they could be able to sell their house, which is how this all got found out when they were signing with the title company and everything that it was encroaching and it needed to be moved somehow. Thing, it was motion by Coleman. It was seconded by Plumber to approve as recommended and it was carried.
Council, have any questions for Jonathan on this vacation of easement? Mr. Rarden?
Okay, if I'm looking at this right, so you're saying part of the house is on the easement?
It looked like a corner of the house was encroaching in the easement when they did the second survey to make sure there was no sewer line or anything in there. It was this, the part that wasn't really nothing underneath there. It just looked like it just from the way the survey was.
Ms. Kessler?
I was just kind of wondering how, because I think the house was built in like 1960, I think I read. And that's long enough for it to be like that. Any idea how?
Understanding is there had never been a survey done until this house started to sell and the purchaser requested a survey. So when the survey was done, that's when it showed up. It had previously never had been surveyed, so wouldn't, didn't show. Or when the title companies previously, they didn't require it at this point. So with the survey, the title company required it. Have a motion? Ms. Benner?
There's no other discussion. I make a motion that we approve the vacation of a portion, portion of platted easement in Lot 1, Block B, Hill Crest Edition.
Second.
Motion second to approve the vacation of the Lot 1, Block B as presented. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, that passed, so it's now going to be vacated and signed so they can do their closing on this other house then.
Thank you.
We have, we have the owners.
Just do a little happy dance real quick. Hold up their closing for two months. We really appreciate it.
We know it's been a little while. With that, no communications. We will move to government body announcements. Any announcements, government bodies? Not seen.
I got one.
You got one? Okay, Ms. Parton?
As everybody knows, this weekend's the Hayesville Fall Festival. It starts Friday night and goes through Sunday. So parade is at nine o'clock on Saturday morning, car shows, entertainment on stage, carnival. Come all out.
Okay, thank you. Senior Center, Wednesday, October 13th, 8:30. Donuts Coffee. Friday, October 15th, 10:50 Hustle Trip to Bordeaux Burper Barn and Coffee Cox Farms Pumpkin Patch. Wednesday, October 20th, 1:00 p.m. from all of these. Saturday, the 23rd, 10:30 Hustle Trip to Vietnam Memorial and Sturman Airfield. This Vietnam Memorial is something to see as happening in Valley Center. It is the moving wall for Vietnam. So it truly is, is something to, to see coming into hand this year. Hazel Hustle, we've had 146 rides over the last two weeks and three new registrations. Also, the library is going to have a candidates forum. You'll have the mayor's candidates and I think you'll also have the school board candidates on the Tuesday, the 19th. I think it starts at 6:30, so we'd like to have all you out. It is going to be recorded. Chris recorded so we can truly put it back on Channel 7 and put it on YouTube so that we can get more people involved. A lot of times we don't get a lot of people personally because they have other things to do. We're going to do that so we can truly get the more people involved out here for the library at this point. Another thing I wanted to truly let the council know is the land bank has sent a development contract to a assisted living developer. And we're waiting on that contract to come back so we can do discussing it. We have an assisted living developer wanting to develop in town. So that will be something we've been trying to get for quite a while. This developer, it is on the land that the city owns. It will allow for maintaining the lake for the people there. It'll also then let us put the thoroughfare through to Broadway at that point. They also will building, be building senior housing around this assisted living center. So it's things that we've been working on for quite a while. We're waiting on the contract to come back so council can review. The land bank can review and do what it is. It'll also mean that we probably need to be looking at some type of traffic calming because this will now become somewhat of a thoroughfare between Broadway and Seneca. I want to let the council know that, that we do have an assisted living center contracted to want to come into town at this point. Other announcements? Of that, we've got item B is the Settler County Fire Department Station 34, monthly report. And then five is old business, nothing. Item six, other business, hearing for 6404 Pleasant. This is the, on the demolition of the garage.
And if you guys had a chance to look in the council packet, there was a memo from Tony explaining what we're doing tonight. Having a hearing in which the owner could present their case and the city could present our case as to why we think the building should be demolished. I'm not going to read through that whole memo, but I will say today we did receive from the owner of the property, basically a bid that they received from a company to go ahead and demolish the building. And they're going to, what they've told us is they're going to schedule it for the week of October 25th. I would recommend that council still pass the resolutions in the packet tonight and put in there in the blank 30 days to give them time to get this thing demolished. And hopefully they can get it done on that week of October 25th. If not, this will give them at least another week to get it done after that. So that's my recommendation and hopefully I can answer any questions you have.
There's no set procedure on the hearing from what I understand, but we do, I think, want to open a hearing here. So we do need a motion to open a hearing on the demolition of this property. Ms. Rarden?
I make a motion. We open hearing for the demolition of the garage.
Second.
Have a motion second to open a hearing on the 6404 Pleasant, the demolition of this garage. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
With that, this hearing is open. We'll let anyone that would like to speak for the property owner speak. We have no one here, so there's no one to speak, so we'll open it to council. Anything council would like to speak about or bring up? If not, then we need a motion to close this hearing. Mr. Benner?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the hearing on 6404 Pleasant. Discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
With that then, you have the resolution in front of you and you, you've heard the, that Will says they have a contractor that will by the 20th?
They said the week of the 25th is when they would try to get it done by.
Okay, so we need to put a date in your resolution as to how long before we step in to do the demolition. I would recommend that we put 30 days in this resolution so that they have time to do it. And then if they do not, we will step in to get a contractor to tear down the garage.
So do we need to add that to the motion to the?
Make a motion to approve the resolution with the 30 days.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, Parsons made that, made that motion. Mr. Rarden, did you second it?
I'll second it.
Have a motion second to approve the resolution with the 30 day timeframe, 30 day timeframe for tearing down the garage, demolishing it. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Great. We'll move on to item B, which is consideration purchase of the foul ball and shade structures for Plagans Carpenter. Rob?
Good evening, mayor and council. Plagans Carpenter Sports Complex is in need of shade structures and protection foul balls for their spectators on fields one, two, three, four, and between seven and eight. In your packet, we do have kind of an arrow shot of where we are planning to put all of these structures. For field one, we're looking to install two of these Skyways cantilever 20 by 36 shades that have a 14-foot entry. In your packet, these are the ones that have two posts. With the size of these bleachers and the area that needs to be covered, these larger shade structures are needed. AFCO is the only business in this area that makes structures this size. This is the only quote that I was able to obtain. I'm recommending purchasing two shade structures from AFCO for a total of $43,450. This will be paid out of rec sales tax. For fields two, three, four, and in between seven and eight, we're looking to install six of the four-post hip joint shade structures that are 20 foot by 30 foot and with a 10-foot entry. And these will cover the current concrete pad that the bleachers sit on right now. After checking references, I am recommending purchasing six shade structures from Fry and Associates for a total of $41,571. If you notice on your arrow map, in between fields one and two, there is a limited amount of space. So we are not able to put two shade structures in between those two fields. There's only 30 feet between the fences. So we're going to put, the shade structures we put on that field will be facing field one. Total purchase price for this project will be $85,021. All of this being paid out of rec sales tax. Does that answer any questions?
Discussion? Or I didn't want you to do it. It's something I know that people on baseball have been asking for a long time for protection from foul balls. This will do two things. It'll give shade and the foul ball protection. What would the council like to do or resist? Ms. Rarden?
I make a motion to approve the bid to AFCO shade for the amount of $85,021 for the shades and the covers.
Second.
Got a motion second to approve the shade covers and foul ball covers as presented. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rarden.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Parton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item C is consideration repair and repainting of the city halls for the arcade, tricade, the outside anyway. Angie's going to take care of it.
Somebody's going to have to take the vote.
She's doing double duty today.
So as presented, we did get the bid for the painting of the facade. The picture does show that there is need of repairs. So we're asking for approval of the bid, I bring my paper, in the amount of $12,580 from Patriotic Painting. It is a local company, office in Hayesville.
Yeah, I know you've gotten, you got more than one bid, I think, didn't you?
We did. We did receive two bids. We, another gentleman did say that he was not able to bid. I contacted many other and due to just everything going on, they're too busy to finish it this fall and wouldn't guarantee pricing for the spring. So they did not choose to bid.
It's now been, how long has it been since this outside was done?
I think it was around 2012.
It's been at least 10, 12 years, hasn't it been? So yeah, it looks like we really do need to do some maintenance there for the building. What would you like to do with the painting?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Clarification, you have an approval for, or you have a contract amount $12,580. Your next line says a budget item of $13,700 will be paid out. Could you explain that, please?
So we're budgeted for the $13,700. This came in under that amount. The amount of the contract would be paid for out of the buildings and grounds.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
So are we, I got a question real fast.
Sure.
I see the facade up there with the metal part that needs painted. Is the stucco going to be painted too? Is that what we're bidding?
It's the stucco and the, and the metal.
Stucco and the metal, okay.
And that both will be repaired.
Okay.
Other questions, council? Did I hear a motion or? Mr. Benner?
If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve bid for Patriotic Painting LLC in the amount of $12,580.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the painting on the bid that has been presented. Are you ready, Rob?
Yep.
Question?
Kessler.
Upstayed.
Walters.
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Another move to IMD, which is consideration of bids for an accounting software. Angie?
Hello, good. In May, our Director Assistant Administration came to me and told me that the current software, accounting and utility billing software we had was not keeping up with our needs. It's designed for cities that are smaller than what we are and he recommended that we look at new options. We did present this at the budget. It was moved into the 2021 budget. That was approved. Those changes were approved. I did send proposals to five different softwares. Only one valid bid was received. I did receive an email today from one of the companies and said they knew they were late, but they weren't interested in bidding. So what I am asking for is approval from Tyler Technologies in the amount of $203,483 for their initial fees and licensing. And then their recurring fees would be effective beginning one year from transitioning to their service and are estimated at $34,124. This would be an annual renewal. So that's just an estimate.
Questions for Angie? Ms. Kessler?
Do we currently have a renewal with the other software?
Yes, it is annually.
With the current software we have?
Yes.
What's that price?
It's 26, almost 27,000.
Good, thank you.
When is that renewal up?
It'd be in December.
In December, okay.
So we would need to go another year with that company while the transition, the transitioning, they said would take anywhere from nine to 18 months. We are doing a few more modules. That's the reason for the price difference. We're going to add payroll into that. Right now, we don't have it. And then, but the utility billing is going to be a lot more user friendly. So I don't know if you guys have used the utility billing website that we have. Currently, you cannot pay your water bill on most phones, so people would be able to do that. It's just going to be easier for everybody to access that information. And we'll talk nicely with the software company for the meters that were approved last week, or last meeting.
My understanding, the new meters we have will be able to download into the software.
Yes, correct.
So it'll actually will speed up the whole process. And the new meters in, they'll download into this where it will not download into our other software.
Correct.
So it'll speed up and save a lot of manpower time.
Yes.
I did have a question. The speeding up, okay, our bills are two months behind on our water. So will this be a monthly, I mean?
I think that what, when you look at the meters, what they're going to do, that's probably going to be phased in once the meters are in, the software is in. So they don't have a phase in time at this point, but there will be a phase in on both of those.
Well, yeah, my question was is instead of getting your bill two months later, you'll get your bill at the end of that month, there will still be a 30-day?
They have not determined and they haven't made a proposal.
All right.
No, they've not made that proposal.
And I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, the other cities, Derby Park, Newton, all that, what are they saying about Tyler Technologies?
They all recommend it. They say that it has saved some of the manual entry that we do currently. So they, they've been very happy with it and they were happy with the transition process.
How long have they been using it?
I don't remember exactly. Derby's been using them for 10 years, I believe. I would have to look back at the spreadsheet. I can get that to you, but multiple years.
Okay, thank you.
For each of them.
Other questions? What would you like to do? What would you like to do, Mr. Riden?
I make a motion to accept the bid for administrative processing software in the amount of $203,483.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the accounting bids, which does include the, that includes the annual also renewal, Angie?
It doesn't need to, we can come back with that one.
Does not, that's separate?
We can, you can do it if you want, or we can come back with it.
We'll do a separate motion today for that then at this point.
I say I can amend my motion if I need to.
No.
You can amend it to take?
I amend my motion to accept the bid for administrative software in the amount of $203,483 with the annual software of $34,124.
Second. Have a motion, second, to approve the accounting software and the annual renewal, annual update. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Riden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
With that, we'll move to department reports. Will?
I have nothing.
Wanted to give an update on the election calendar. Today would have been the last day to register to vote, so if you haven't done that today, unfortunately you won't be able to vote in this election. If you would like to request an advanced voting ballot, those need to be requested by October 22nd, and the last day that you can submit your advanced ballot application would be October 26th. So to request the application, you have to do it by October 22nd to then send your, back in, it has to be put there by the 26th. The early voting satellite sites will open on October 28th. There is an extensive list of sites. The Hayesville Community Library is one of those. It'll be open from 10 to 7, October 28th and 29th, and from 9 to 4 on October 30th. The different sites, if you want to vote on the day of, you can find those if you go to the Settler County Election Site and put in your address, and it'll tell you where to go, if you don't still have your card with it listed on the back.
Thank Angie. Chief?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council. Wanted to introduce our visiting officer this evening is Officer Chase Carpenter. He's been with the department for a couple of years, and he is currently assigned to the second shift from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, so say hi to him as you go by out there. Also, wanted to make sure everybody was aware that we're having our next DEA drug takeback on the 23rd, Saturday the 23rd, from 10 till 2. Again, it'll be out here in front of the police department, it'll be a drive-through event again, so nobody will have to get out of their cars, you just drive up through the lane, put it in a box, and let it go. Everything can stay in their original bottles, you don't have to worry about taking off prescription labels or anything else, it's going to go into the incinerator, so it's a, you can just leave all that stuff on there, you don't have to worry about the privacy part of it, it's going to get incinerated. But again, just, they don't take any needles or sharps or anything like that, just the medication. It's a better way to get rid of medication rather than having them sitting around or flushing them down the sewer system, which we don't want to do because that causes issues. One other thing, Ms. Parton mentioned earlier, that we do have the Fall Festival this weekend, just wanted to remind everybody that the parade is Saturday morning, so if you're going to travel down Grand on a Saturday morning, expect some traffic delays around nine o'clock, because that's when we have to close the streets to put the parade through there. So that will be going on. Also, there will be some road closures around the park, starting as soon as tonight or tomorrow. Sarah Lane will be closing to permit the carnival to move in there and start setting everything up over there, so look for a different way around, go down Grand or something, because it'll be closed off over there on Sarah Lane, so just expect those traffic delays around there also. So, and just everybody have fun this weekend and make sure you're applying the rules in the park. Thanks.
Will, do you have anything for Tony?
No.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Hack Youth Basketball Deadline is on October 22nd. We will have our annual spectacular Halloween event in Dorner Park on October 24th from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, candy and games and Eric rides. And then we're taking registration for our singles pickleball tournament on November 13.
Yeah, Rob? Item A, appointments, we have none out of nine off agenda citizens, anyone? No? Item 10, executive, we have none. Item 11, bills to be paid, bills to be passed first half of October. Mr. Riden?
I make a motion to pay the bills from first half of October.
Second? Well, second, pay bills first half of October. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Riden?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Consent agenda, we have nothing. Item 13, council concerns. Counsel, any concerns anywhere? Not seeing any, we'll go to council action request updates. Will?
The first one on there, we already talked about tonight, so their property owners plan on getting that demolished on the week of the 25th, and we passed the resolution giving them 30 days to accomplish it before we go in and have it demolished. 7050 Plaza, they're still, had indicated that they're making repairs. If not, they don't get that done, we're going to issue a notice to appear in court. Next one on there, 7106 South Broadway, set for trial on October 26th, so there's nothing new from last council meeting to this council meeting. 155 in Arsdale, the resident is currently addressing issues, but the court date is on Tuesday next week, October 19th. 74, 74 South Broadway, property owner has weeded around, taken care of that one, that was complete, and I skipped over one because there's nothing in the packet, but over here, 210, 210 Trout, I'm getting the address right, 120 Trout, I had those mixed up. The resident, the manager of that property was in court today and actually did go to jail today, so he's going to be in jail for a couple of weeks, and then when he gets out, he'll come back to court, and we'll see what the judge has to do with that.
Think about questions for anyone on those? Seeing that, we're ready for adjournment.